Work.
Dr. Wheeler?
Nothing tonight.
All right, Director Ayers?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, Director Kenwisher?
Not this evening, thank you.
All right. Ms. Bruckman?
Yes.
And then I will take motions for two closed sessions this evening. The first one is the executive session personnel.
I move the board hold a closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five one I of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose hiring is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as that individual has requested a closed session.
Motion by Director Wagley, second by Director Ayers, that the board hold a closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five one I of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose hiring is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as this individual has requested a closed session.
We'll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Director Wagley?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
And then I will take another motion for the closed session superintendent evaluation.
I move the board hold a closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five one I of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as this individual has requested a closed session.
We'll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Director Wagley?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
And then I will take another motion for the closed session superintendent evaluation.
I move the board hold a closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five one I of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as this individual has requested a closed session.
We'll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Director Wagley?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
And then I will take another motion for the closed session superintendent evaluation.
I move the board hold a closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five one I of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as this individual has requested a closed session.
We'll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Director Wagley?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
And then I will take another motion for the closed session superintendent evaluation. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or guests that would like to comment? All right. Moving on to board members. Director Wagley, do you have anything this evening?
Nothing really, nothing except I just wanted to say an interesting story. Over this last weekend, I was in New York City during spring break and I went to a couple Broadway shows and I went to The Great Gatsby, which is a well-known musical. And the reason why I'm bringing it up is because one of the main stars of the show along with, oh, the person from Modern Family who plays Haley, Sarah Hyland, was Samantha Pauley. And Samantha Pauley is a PV grad. She graduated in two thousand and eight. She was involved in the junior, she was involved as a junior in musical theater here and then she graduated from here and she went on and she is now currently on Broadway. And so after the show, we met with her and congratulated her and she was very happy to see fellow Bettendorf people there to see her show. So it's just interesting to see her and she did an amazing job. And so if anybody gets a chance, you should go to Broadway and see The Great Gatsby and see her and support her.
Very cool.
Dr. Wheeler?
Nothing tonight.
All right, Director Ayers?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, Director Kenwisher?
Not this evening, thank you.
All right. Ms. Bruckman?
Yes, I have a few. I wanted to first start by recognizing our science bowl club team at the high school. Recently, they won the Iowa regional championship in May, which qualified them to compete in the national science bowl competition in Washington, DC in April. So congratulations to them and a special shout out to Abby DeBailey, who's one of our science teachers and the club advisor. I also wanted to extend a congratulations to our PV robotics team deviation from the norm for their performance at the state championship in Iowa City toward the beginning or middle of March. They were a top ten robot in the state and they were recognized for a design award and it was a great season for them. This past weekend, they also competed with the large robots in Peoria and I haven't heard yet from Mr. Fronzenberg how they did, so I'll probably talk about that one next board meeting. I also wanted to take some time to recognize four of our students at the high school. They're part of the Iowa all-state cheerleading squad and the four cheerleaders tried out with a group of two hundred and fifty other cheerleaders from around the state and only twenty-one cheerleaders were placed on the squad and PV had four. So it's the most that we've ever had in the history of the program. So congratulations to Isabella Moore, Isabel Gibbs, Savannah Kirkpatrick, and Miranda Wise. To round out our, the accomplishments of our students, I want to recognize our students who participated in the state individual speech competition over the weekend. We had fourteen events compete, three received division-two ratings and eleven received division-one ratings, including seven of those eleven which received straight ones from the judges. And in addition, Will Emmerly will be performing at the all-state festival on Monday, March thirty-first at U and I where he will be giving his public address speech. And finally, I wanted to extend a special congratulations to Sean Rice. Sean is one of our teachers down at Edison Academy and joined us here earlier this year when we covered the Edison program. Sean was recently awarded the lifetime achievement award from the Iowa Association of Alternative Education. And I believe part of the nomination process for that includes information from students and we have access to the letter that the student wrote on Sean's behalf and it's pretty powerful. Congratulations to her. Just as a reminder, she is retiring at the end of the year and that letter and the award is just proof of her impact here in the district and the fact that she is going to be greatly missed.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mrs. Kenyon, did you have anything this evening?
I do not, thank you for asking.
And Mrs. Lynn?
No.
Nothing? Mr. Hyatt?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, and Mr. Cully?
I have nothing.
Okay, Mr. Struse?
I just want to share the sad news. This last Thursday, a sophomore at the high school, Zach Maxwell, lost his life after a courageous fight with cancer. Back in November, his wife or his family and them had to make some tough decision of what they would do and at that point, they just wanted to enjoy life. But here's some words that Mr. Jones wrote this weekend to the high school staff and to us. It says his incredible attitude through his courageous fight and the unbelievable difficult decision he and his family had to make was an inspiration to many. So to Zach Maxwell's family, that all is relative as we hear our thoughts and prayers.
Mrs. Damon, did you have anything this evening?
There's a personal agenda and since drama was mentioned, I will congratulate the drama students who staged mousetrap, the stage crew and the actors were outstanding, absolutely outstanding. And the drama kids will be visiting us here at our next board meeting in order to meet some of these amazing students.
Great, thank you. Awesome. All right, and then I just have a couple things here. Good luck to the ethics bowl team at nationals. They will be competing on April twelfth at UNC. They qualified after winning both state and regional competition. And then also a congratulations to Mrs. Samuelson, fourth grade teacher at Cody, on winning the favorite teacher award presented by WQAD. She was selected after her student Laurel wrote a wonderful essay about how special of a teacher she is. So congratulations to her. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Is there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If no questions, I will take nothing.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to approval of bills. General fund?
I move that the general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of six hundred and eighty-four thousand, fourteen dollars and thirty-eight cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Ayers, that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nutrition fund?
I move the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, thirty-seven and seventeen cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Ayers, that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Elementary junior high activity fund?
I move that the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of three thousand, six hundred and six dollars in payment and invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? High school activity fund?
I move the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of forty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirteen cents in payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Management fund?
I move that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? High school activity fund?
I move the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of forty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirteen cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Management fund?
I move that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents in payment of invoice presented. Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? High school activity fund?
I move the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of forty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirteen cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Ayers, that high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Management fund?
I move that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to approval of bills. General fund?
I move that the general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of six hundred and eighty-four thousand, fourteen dollars and thirty-eight cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Wagley, second by Director Ayers, that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Management fund?
I move that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So like it says there airplane insurance, what is airplane insurance? It should be airplane insurance. So then, that's what I was thinking. Airplane insurance.
Yeah, it's a typo.
That doesn't go on that, under that separate airplane fund that we have that, you know how we have a separate fund for that?
We normally pay for our insurance out of the management fund.
Okay, I just didn't know what the rules were on that, so I was questioning if it should be come out of this fund or the other fund, but it sounds like because it's insurance it goes through this, okay.
Yep.
Okay, good question. Any other questions? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This project through. I'm speaking here tonight to raise awareness in hopes that it will help push the project forward. I have a detailed plan of everything that needs to be done in order to create a recycling program. But I cannot move forward without the information I need and approval from the administration. I'm hopeful that you also believe recycling is important and are supportive of making sure that all the schools in our district are able to participate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or guests that would like to comment? All right, um, moving on to board members, um, Dr. Wogley, do you have anything this evening?
Um, nothing really, nothing except I just wanted to say an interesting story. Um, over this last weekend, I was in uh, New York City during spring break and I went to a couple Broadway shows and I went to um, The Great Gatsby, which um, is a well-known uh, musical. And the reason why I'm bringing it up is because one of the main stars of the show along with um, um, oh, the, the person from Modern Family who plays Haley, um, Sarah Hyland, was Samantha Polly. And Samantha Polly, uh, is a PV grad. She graduated in two thousand and eight. She was involved in the junior, she was involved as a junior in musical theater here and then she graduated from here and she went on and she's now currently on Broadway. And so, uh, after the show, we met with her and congratulated her and she was very happy to see fellow Bettendorf people there to see her show. So it's just interesting to see uh, her and she did an amazing job. And so if anybody gets a chance, you should go to Broadway and see The Great Gatsby and see her and support her.
Very cool. Director Wheeler?
Nothing tonight.
All right, Director Ayers?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, Director Canwisheer?
Not this evening, thank you.
All right. Uh, Ms. Brestkern?
Yes, I have you. Um, I wanted to first start by recognizing our science bowl club team at the high school. Um, recently they won the Iowa Regional Championship in May, which qualified them to compete in the National Science Bowl Competition in Washington DC in April. So congratulations to them and a special shout out to Abby DeBailey, who's one of our science teachers and um, the club advisor. I also wanted to extend a congratulations to our PV Robotics Team Deviation From The Norm for their performance at the state championship in Iowa City toward the beginning or middle of March. Um, they were a top ten robot in the state and they were recognized for a design award and it was a great season for them. This past weekend, they also competed with the Large Robots in Peoria and I haven't heard yet from Mr. Fronzenberg how they did, so I'll that one next board meeting. I also wanted to take some time to recognize four of our um, students at the high school. They're part of the Iowa All-State Cheerleading Squad. And the four cheerleaders tried out with a group of two hundred and fifty other cheerleaders from around the state and only twenty-one cheerleaders were placed on the squad and PV had four. So it's the most that we've ever had in the history of the program. Um, so congratulations to Isabella Moore, Isabel Gibbs, Savannah Kirkpatrick, and Miranda Wise. Um, to round out our, the accomplishments of our students, I want to recognize our students who participated in the state individual speech competition over the weekend. We had fourteen events compete, three received division two ratings, and eleven received division one ratings, including seven of those eleven which received straight ones from the judges. And in addition, Will Emmerly will be performing at the All-State Festival on Monday, March thirty-first at U and I, where he will be giving his public address speech. And finally, I wanted to extend a special congratulations to Sean Rice. Sean is one of our teachers down at Edison Academy and joined us here earlier this year when we covered the Edison Program. Sean was recently awarded the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Iowa Association of Alternative Education. Um, and I believe part of the nomination process for that includes um, information from students. And we have access to the letter that the student wrote on Sean's behalf and it's pretty powerful. Congratulations to her. Just as a reminder, she is retiring at the end of the year and that letter and the award is just proof of her impact here in the district and the fact that she is going to be greatly missed.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mrs. Kenyon, did you have anything this evening?
I do not, thank you for asking.
And Mrs. Lynn?
No.
Nothing this evening. Mr. Hyatt?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, and Mr. Cully?
I have nothing.
Okay, Mr. Struse?
I just want to share the sad news. This, uh, last Thursday, a sophomore at the high school, Zach Maxwell, um, lost his life after a courageous fight with cancer. Um, back in November, his wife or his family and them had to make some tough decision of what they would do and at that point, they just wanted to enjoy life. Um, but here's some words that Mr. Jones wrote this weekend to the high school staff and to us. It says his incredible attitude this, through his courageous fight and the unbelievable difficult decision he and his family had to make was an inspiration to many. So to Zach Maxwell's family, that all is relative as we hear our thoughts and prayers.
Mrs. Damon, did you have anything this evening?
There's a bit of personal agenda and since drama was mentioned, I will congratulate the drama students who staged mousetrap, the stage crew and the actors were outstanding and so they are stunning. And the drama keep visiting us here at our next board meeting and to meet some of these amazing students.
Great, thank you. Awesome. All right, and then um, I just have a couple things here. Um, good luck to the FX Bowl Team at Nationals. They will be be competing on April twelfth at UNC. They qualified after winning both state and regional competition. And then also a congratulations to Mrs. Samuelson, fourth grade teacher at Cody, on winning the Favorite Teacher Award presented by WQAD. She was selected after her student Laurel wrote a wonderful essay about how special of a teacher she is. So congratulations to her. All right, moving on to uh, the consent agenda. Is there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If no questions, I will take nothing.
I move the board to approve the consent agendas.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to approval of bills. Uh, general fund?
I move that the general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of six hundred and eighty-four thousand, fourteen dollars and thirty-eight cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Wogley, second by Director Ayers, that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nutrition Fund?
I move the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, thirty-seven and seventeen cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Wogley, that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Elementary, Junior, High Activity Fund?
I move that the elementary, junior, high activity fund warrant be issued in the total of three thousand, six hundred and six dollars in payment and invo- invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that elementary, junior, high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? High School Activity Fund?
I move the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of forty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirteen cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Ayers, that high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Management Fund?
I move that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Canwisheer, that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So um, like it says there, Air Place Insurance. What is Air Place Insurance?
It should be airplane insurance.
So then, that's what I was thinking. Insurance.
Yeah, it's a typo.
That doesn't go on that, under that separate airplane fund that we have that, you know, we have a separate fund for that?
We normally pay for our insurance out of the management fund.
Okay, I just didn't know what the rules were on that, so I was questioning if it should be come out of this fund or the other fund, but it sounds like because it's insurance that goes through this, okay.
Yep.
Okay, good question. Any other questions? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Capital Projects Fund?
I move that the Capital Projects Fund, um, warrants be issued in the total amount of one million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-two cents in payment of invoices present.
Second.
Motion by Director Wogley, second by Director Wheeler, that Capital Project Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Physical Plant And Equipment Levy Fund?
I move that the Physical Plant And Equipment Levy Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and ten ninety-four cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Canwisheer, that Physical Plant And Equipment Levy Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Student Construction Fund?
I move that the Student Construction Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of five hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-six cents in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that Student Construction Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Internal Service Fund?
I move that the Internal Service Fund warrants sixty-six thirty-seven to sixty-six forty-one and ACH three twenties, three two six eight through three two seven three be issued in the total amount of six hundred and five thousand, eight fifty-six and fifty-two cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Ayers, that Internal Service Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Trust Fund Warrants?
I move that Trust Fund Warrants be issued in the total amount of nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and seven cents in payment of invoice.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that Trust Fund Warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to old business. Uh, Iowa Association of School Boards Development Session? Yes, please.
First of all, as a real quick thank you, I want to thank again Director Wogley and President Brockman for allowing us and having the idea to bring Tammy Drawball in last time. Like it was a great learning opportunity. Um, I had told our other directors, I said to me, it was a great night. It was fun to listen to all of you and, and collaborating together, but also having a lot of common answers to what we're doing in the show that as a board, you guys are working very well together. So Tammy had asked us, um, after an email to Molly and myself after that, if you guys would take a moment just to reflect on maybe one or two things that you liked about the evening? Or maybe think about moving forward, what could we do differently if we did another learning session together? So maybe if you just want to take a moment, jot something down, we can collect those and share those with Tammy also. But it's just again, a chance to remember the importance of learning together, um, and maybe what a future lesson can be in the future too. So, Molly, anything else you want to share?
Um, no, I had, I guess yes. Um, I had gotten some ideas from Tammy on other sessions and I will share those with all of you so you can kind of have an idea of, you know, what's out there because she did ask, you know, what, what, what other sessions would you be interested in and, you know, it's it's hard to come up with something, but then when she starts mentioning some ideas, it's kind of like, oh, you know, that might be kind of interesting. So I will share those with you as well and uh, uh, welcome you to, to give me some uh, some feedback on if that's something you're interested in. But uh, I think, you know, it was a very valuable session. Um, and I think it was Adrian that said right after, she's like, oh gosh, I wish, you know, we, I would have done this a while back. And it is, and even as a seasoned board member, I felt like I was able to take a lot away from it as well. So um, yeah, I think going forward, we want to continue to, you know, Dr. Wogley and I talked about it, it's something I think we want to continue to to do and to just uh, a way for us, our board to, to uh, work together and um, be strong as a board, so.
So if you could just take a minute, maybe jot something down, let us have you share out, uh, reflection what you liked or something you can improve upon would be great and we'll propose that information to Tammy as well. So take a moment, uh, some private reasoning time as we would say in the classroom. Doug, since I cannot see you writing, are you in a good place to share?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Would you like to start or we can start with someone here first?
Start local, please.
Start local, all right.
You need to go first? Um, so I wrote down two things. One was I really loved hearing my fellow board members, um, different approaches to situations and, and different things that we run into. The calibration of kind of validating my own thought process with theirs was, was a good thing for me, especially being a newer board member to know that I was thinking about it in the right way. Um, so that was really helpful. It kind of just gave me a little more confidence when I'm talking to people or when I get calls about different things. Um, and then kind of that true, very clear um, definition and clarification on what the boards, board members' roles are versus, you know, the admin- the administration or leaders in the school district was very helpful, um, especially with all the different examples because there are so many kind of gray areas and things. Um, so walking through all those examples was very helpful to me.
Um, I just stated that it was a, it was really great for um, us as a whole board to collaborate in more of a non-formal way. Um, a lot of times when we're doing business at the board table, we don't get to hear a whole lot of um, the way that we're thinking about, so I thought that was great. Um, and one thing, are we sharing what we would change to?
Great.
I would suggest that we start our meeting, board meeting earlier, uh, so it is not so late getting out, but it was a, it was a great meeting.
I got to miss bedtime. I'm still in the weeds, remember?
Oh, yes.
Um, so I guess one of my uh, highlights was just uh, at the beginning of the meeting, talking about, you know, where like we, you know, in five years, what, what we want to be remembered as, as a board member or as a board. And uh, you know, that just kind of gave up me and a chance to think about, you know, we, we don't, we don't ever sit down and say, you know, what do we want to be remembered as? Uh, you know, what are our goals? We don't take a lot of time to do that. We're usually uh, busy with business. So it was a nice chance to step back and talk about what our goals are and then also see how many of us had similar goals, but come from different, you know, thoughts and processes and uh, stages in our, our careers and our um, our journey and all that. So it was, it was kind of fun to see all how that all came together.
I didn't participate, but I did talk to several members who I think have kind of echoed what, what you guys have already heard about how, you know, looking at the forests and the trees, kind of getting that big picture view of what the board's responsibility is. Uh, I think that it's, it was really instructional from what I understood about the different types of responsibilities that we of a board have, because there always seem to be misconceptions about that. And so once you are pretty solidified in what your role is, it's easy for you to explain to people and constituents, you know, what your job is versus what's an administrative job. Um, one of the suggestions that I have, uh, now I don't know if things have changed, but I know that when I was very early on in the board, like twelve years ago, they used to have traveling workshops that went throughout the state. And um, me and several board members would go and um, they have one in Bettendorf, they have one in Clinton, they have one in McHocata, I think. And I think they even had one down in um, Muscatine. Anyway, we, we would, whoever it was free, we would all just kind of drive down together and go to these workshops. And they used to have them frequently uh, throughout the years and then you got your, your board points, but you also got to interface with other board members from our area districts. And even psych superintendents would come as well. And so what I have asked is if we can maybe try and, I mean, I do see some of them come, but I don't see them coming close to our area. I feel like they're, they're sometimes more in western Iowa or central Iowa, but I don't see any that's really been um, uh, positioned here unless I'm missing something. Is that true, Doug?
I haven't had one close. I think COVID kind of changed that.
I, I think so too, and I really liked that a lot.
Because sometimes they think Iowa stops at Iowa City.
Yeah.
So we do, do a lot of traveling to a pleasant or
Uh-huh.
whatever. But um, especially after a board election, they usually have a session for the board members, which and as some mentioned earlier, even if you've heard all this stuff before, it's always good to hear together, hear how the people
It really is. And you know, ma- maybe, and I, I did a couple that were on Zoom as well, but I just find that you can be with other board members and they, what they do is you break up into little tables as well from different um, districts and you get to meet others, kind of see what, what challenges they're having. It's just a nice way to network and and learn about resources. If you're having an issue and you remember talking to somebody from a different district, having a solution, you can call them and say, listen, tell me about this, how did you guys work that out? I just think it just makes for more information gathering. So if there's a way for them to restart that, I think that would be really beneficial.
Or if we could uh, host something and have Tammy and invite up districts.
That's exactly, and yeah, I mean, if we could host it, it would be great.
If they planned, it could be.
I would love that. That would be great if we could do that.
Well, with Tammy on that, that's a great idea.
So then it would not be part of a
It's not a board meeting.
It'll be separate.
Separate.
Kind of a separate.
Sometimes they have dinner before.
Yeah, usually, it's usually, it's kind of Thursday, you, you start at five, you have dinner, you kind of meet with some people and then they start the session.
Okay.
And it's super cool. Sorry, this goes way back, I know, but you know, like, McHocata had the big additions.
Yes.
All that McHocata.
Yeah, that was wonderful to see their addition.
Wouldn't it be awesome to host students' burn commons?
Yes.
And have people that are
Exactly. Yeah, because we, we took a tour of the McHocata High School when we went there.
You would this fall, we open up the new classroom addition.
There you go. I would love to see if we could host one, it would be wonderful.
With Tammy.
Thank you.
And Doug, did you want to share anything?
Yeah, so I was pretty impressed. We did all have the same vision. That was helpful to understand because I don't think we've ever done an exercise like that. And I walked away wondering, you know, if we should be doing some sort of strategy session annually. Part of that driver is, is my background in risk management. I'm always looking forward and trying to figure out what situations we may be finding ourselves in the next few years, you know, and how big the impact that might be. And having an alignment in a little more great detail than we went into last time might help us make some difficult decisions that may face us in the next few years. So, um, that's kind of my, you know, curiosity, maybe something we should think about doing. Um, and then from a like, personal perspective, um, it was pretty interesting. I learned some facial and tonal aspects of talking to stakeholders from those one-on-one sessions, not just um, with you Molly, but I watched some of the others. And I have, I'm one of those people who tends to nod a lot and it was pretty interesting. I think Tammy directly addressed that we have to be careful with that because sometimes they'll think you're saying yes, so you know, I got that out of it too. I'm like, oh, that's a really good point. So, um, yeah, those are the pieces I took away from you there. Just stuck in my head.
Doug, great.
Well, thank you again to everybody for doing that. And I believe Tammy, I know she sent you and I, but maybe it's sent all of you where you are at in your learning sessions and how many credits you have towards that fifteen. So our goal will be to get the whole board um, certified or approved by the fifteenth by November. So when they go to the session, we can all be recognized as well. So stay tuned for more.
Sounds great. All right, and so then we will move on to new business. And the first item is the elementary playground improvement bids.
So Leland is here tonight also. We had our bid opening for the, the site work and the installation of the rubberized surface in the final three, phase two of the three schools. So you see the two quotes that we received. Um, the one we are asking for tonight is the Apollo Excavating. Um, the first one, I mean, we look at that, the other company that came in was the same one that did it last year. Um, they were from out of towns. That might be one of the reasons why Apollo Excavating is cheaper because they are in town. Um, we felt very comfortable with them. And our plan is to start on May first at Cody Elementary. So just like we did last year at Bridgeville, we will have recess and those type of things in the grassy area, things for kids to do. So that, that gives us a jumpstart on the summer work and hopefully have them all completed by the start of the school year.
Do you know what order of schools you're going, so Cody and then?
You'd probably, my guess is they would probably move to Hopewell second because knock on wood, Forest Grove should be the easiest one because it's removing the gra- pea gravel and putting in new equipment and actually shrinking the playground a little bit. So not taking anything out minus the pea gravel. Would you agree?
It's a lot of pea gravel.
There is a lot of pea gravel.
We got a lot of semi trucks going in behind there. So we can't, we can't do that one when school is in session.
Well, I'm still finding pea gravel in my driveway.
It's still falling out of kids' shoes.
Well, Leland, he'll come sweep it up.
But we have talked to, um, again this year, they'll be having the Buffalo Bill or the Wild Coyote or Cody. Uh, not Coyote. The Buffalo Bill, the Cody. Out at Cody Elementary so that they know that that playground area will be closed off. We'll work with them so there's no interference with that event and playground being done as well.
And we have received all the equipment already. So if you, yeah. I think we've, it was like a thirty percent savings for ordering ahead of time. So we've, that was ordered and it's already arrived. So it's, it's getting installed.
Yeah. And the good news is from the money we raised, which is about two point five eight million right now, all in, as of today, the project is two point six. So it's about roughly fifty thousand dollars over. We're hoping to have about a thirty thousand dollar savings on some work that they won't have to do on the final project when they fill in the as- asphalt or concrete. So we're almost coming in right at bid on this one, which for this project is pretty amazing. So knock on wood that it continues to stay that way between now and the end, but.
Normally when you retire an old facility, you can uh, raffle off something special of it, but I don't think to be able to pay for pea gravel.
Exactly. There's, yeah, there's a lot there, so.
All right. Any questions?
Couple of questions. Um, so because the Forest Grove, um, equipment is so fairly new, what are they going to do with it?
Great question. So Forest Groves will stay completely as is and they will add a couple of new pieces as well.
Whatever we bought when we built it is still going to be there.
Hundred percent staying, yes. And then even Hopewell Elementary, for the most part, everything that's there right now will also stay in place. We'll add a little bit more to that one and then the preschool one will be tore out, so that'll be replaced.
Um, then if you remember last year when we did these, they were coming pretty close up to the beginning of school for them to get it done. Like in that last week, I remember I was getting a lot of emails. I was talking to you about that, like, is it going to get done? People were walking and they were like, I can't believe school's going to start next week and look at the playground, it still looks this way, that way. What is going to be done this time to try and prevent that from happening? What is gonna be done this time to try and prevent that from happening where it's done and you don't have to worry about. People and constituents being worried that it's not gonna get done in time, you know? And do they know that, that we haven't worked through last time?
There's an end, they're all, it's a different company this time.
Right.
There is an end date in the contract. It says majority has to be done by this time. I think what happened is the company last year got overextended. They ran into some problems out of town and they just, I think they got in over their head.
Cause we had about a three week window of time where nothing was happening.
I know, and I heard that too, like, nobody's working on these things, what's going on?
Yeah. So we've talked to this company already and hopefully them being local, that we won't see that issue. Cause they, this company's from out of town. They pretty much just pulled up and. And then we had one issue at Pleasant View where they had to do some rework because the curbing was not put in accurately. It was put in too high, so they had to come back and redo that. It wasn't a huge issue, but it was a little bit of slowdown too.
I would just say make sure that they know, this new company knows that, that some of the challenges from last year and that there's at least one board member who's watching it.
Cause last year we didn't get started May first, it was more in the middle of May. So we're like, hopefully Cody's more wide open. So if we can get in there earlier, like we can get out earlier too.
That'd be great. I think they did some work at Pleasant View after the school started that they had. And remember you guys, you guys were waiting, we were waiting on that, that what's it called, that pit thing?
Gaga pits.
Gaga pits, right? But you already ordered those? Okay, so they're already here.
Oh, well, for this job?
Yeah.
For this job, Doug. Okay, do we have any new Gaga pits on this one?
Uh, not.
Most of the buildings already have Gaga pits.
Gaga pits in the locations that they're talking about. I don't know about Cody, off the top of my head, but the other two buildings. They will remain where they are. They're already on concrete slab. And the cumulative aspect of this project is far less. So I would think the timeline was more reasonable for these three schools as opposed to the previous three.
Okay, thank you.
With Forest Grove already having all the pieces there and put together, that probably should help. Any other questions? Are there any comments? We'll go out of public hearing. And I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the low bid from Apollo Excavating for the amount of four hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. For the twenty twenty-five Cody Elementary, Forest Grove Elementary and Hopewell Elementary Playground Replacement Project.
Second.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Ayers, that the board approve the low bid from Apollo Excavating. For the amount of four hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. For the twenty twenty-five Cody Elementary, Forest Grove Elementary and Hopewell Elementary Playground Replacement Project. We'll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Director Walkley.
Yes.
Mr. Kamischer.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
I just wanna thank the board and, and Brian, your persistence on this. I know that um, when I would go around to the PTAs, um. We've heard this a lot regarding the, the, the playground. And to see that after this year, we're gonna deliver on um, our commitment. To making the playgrounds without the pea gravel and accessible for all students is uh, really commendable. I just wanted to. I know that we had challenges from a funding standpoint, we're able to work through that. And I just wanted to thank you for being persistent on this. Thank you. I'm really excited for this to be done.
Thanks for your support, everybody.
Moving on to the Pleasant Valley Junior High Partial Roof Replacement Project.
What this is, it's right around the library area. There's just to the east of the library and right into the west of the library. It's two sections of roofing that we're replacing. We're also doing a section just south of the library. So, uh. These areas we've had trouble with in the last year, where we've had slow leaks in those areas. Uh, quite a few complaints from the staff, so hopefully we can get those resolved. So we had two bids that came in, I'm sorry, three bids that came in, but two are, we only looked at two of them. Two or lower. Jim Geese was two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And R three roofing was two hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. Now, those are the base bids. They also had alternate bids. The alternate bid was the south area that was just, just mentioned. That was an additional fifty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars from Jim Geese. Horn and R three had an additional sixty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. So we did choose to go ahead and accept the alternative bid. So we're gonna do three different areas right there in that area around the library. The only questions that came up was unit pricing. Unit prices is like the metal decking. So if the, took all the layers of roofing off, the insulation, the rubber and all that stuff underneath it. Before it gets to the trusses, there's a metal deck that goes all the way across. There's a small chance that you could have glass that's come down through there. We've only seen it once. Rare. Their unit pricing is quite a bit higher than the other two. Uh, so we're taking a little bit of risk. Chances are we're not gonna have any issues with the decking anyway, so it shouldn't matter. But we are taking, it's just, it's something we have to be aware of though.
We tried to calculate if we did have the risk, how much square footage would we have in that situation? And would the price of this unit cost exceed what the other one might be in? Uh, both architects thought we'd be in a good place. They would not have to worry about that. So kept R three still as the low one.
So what were the issues that you noticed? Was it just like there was leaking?
Yes.
And did the, did this, did these leaks predate all the work that was done at the junior high that we just recently did? And you know how with the additions and all that?
Yeah, these are older. These would be part of the original part of the building. Uh, they could have been redone at some point. I mean, the building was nineteen seventy. But this would be if you walked in the front of the building, walked straight down to the library, you go on that main hallway, there'd be that one. And then you go on the other side of the cat, or the library, it'd be that hallway down there as well. So nothing of the new, yeah, exactly, right in the middle of the school. So nothing that would be new part of the building.
But you know, sometimes when you, if you built something on it, all of a sudden the flow goes different and then all of a sudden it creates a problem that you didn't anticipate. So I just wanna make sure that was not the cause.
No, it's not.
Okay.
So about how much square footage does this involve?
Total project wise?
Yeah.
Well, what's a classroom?
Okay, so.
Nine hundred square feet, more than that.
Yes.
About nine hundred.
About nine hundred.
So you've probably have. Probably seven to eight classrooms on a side.
So I guess I'm just looking at like the square footage per, because, I mean, if there were issues with the metal deck or the wood block. It would probably not be, it would be like on the edges or it wouldn't be total.
Correct, it wouldn't be the whole deck. It might be on the edge where the wall is, the high part of it and right there.
Okay.
Uh, by this, on the exterior.
And I think the big thing is, is most of the leaking that we've seen, and Brian can attest probably better than I can, it's more recent. So it has, it's not like it's been leaking in those areas for ten plus years. It has been recent, so we're expecting the, the decking to be fine.
And they would start this when?
As soon as route of school.
And they'll be done before school starts.
And have we had R three do any other projects for us?
They're new also.
And where are they out of?
They're out of Davenport here.
Yeah. And there was also one in Des Moines area, I believe.
Des Moines and Florida.
Yeah. We had never really heard of them having to work. So we just, as soon as the bidding got over and everybody left, we actually called R three back. To ask some questions like you're asking. And then one of the architects was also gonna check in some places in Des Moines. We also have, may have had them do some things, but um, overall, for those conversations, we felt comfortable moving forward with them. The architect also, and Leland would say it's, it should be a pretty easy job. So we'll see. They shouldn't have screwed it up, but you never know.
It sounded like they started as residential and they branched into commercial in the last few years. But we did, we actually checked some references, but to be honest, we can't even, we can check them, but we can't deny their bid. Because of references. It was just for our own wellbeing, going, geez, what are we getting into? Cause we've never heard of them. And the, the company for the Apollo for the playground, we've never heard of either, so.
Okay.
So hopefully it's, they're good surprises.
Sounds good.
But the references came back fine, so that was, that was good news.
Any other questions? I will go into public hearing. Other comments? Out of public hearing. And I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the low bid from R three roofing for the base amount of two hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. The add alternative of sixty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and the unit price bid amounts as presented for the playground. Junior High Partial Roof Replacement Project.
Second.
Motion by Director Walkley, second by Director Kamischer, that the board approve the low bid from R three roofing for the base amount of. Two hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and. The, uh, the add alternative of sixty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. And the unit price bid amounts as presented for the Pleasant Valley Junior High Partial Roof Replacement Project. We'll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Dr. Walkley. Mr. Kamischer.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Yes. Twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar update.
Thank you. Um, this is one of those where I guess I'm bringing this to board, to all of you, to get your feedback and your thoughts. And how we move forward. Um, and I guess I would classify this as I see there's probably three options. One thing that has come to light and maybe it started last school year. We have always, as long as I can remember, we've always been committed to a hundred and eighty school days. Because the rule is it's a one thousand eighty hours, at least one thousand eighty hours or a hundred eighty school days. Our calendar does say one thousand eighty hours. I mean, that's really what we go by. But part of our, I'll say our commitment to excellence has always been, we go a hundred and eighty days of school. We could go less. There's, there's no doubt about that. So last year it came into light because if you recall, we had some snow days. And we were like the last school, I think, in the Quad Cities still in session by about four days last year. Well, what seems to be the trend, I would say, is that when a snow day happens and a school has enough hours. To cover that school day, they're not making them up. We have always operated, we are making it up no matter what. Um, what has hot, brought it to more of an attention this year would be two things. One, we have a s- snow day to make up. We made the one up back in February. We were supposed to end school on a Friday. It now would go to Monday, June ninth. So it brings us back. When people saw that, they started asking a lot of questions, asking around. And right now, my understanding. Davenport is staying true to their May thirtieth, that's a Friday, that they'll be done May thirtieth. Bedendorf and North Scott, as my last conversation to confirm again today, um, both of those are still planning on being done Wednesday, June fourth. So what does that do? That would move us to, instead of being done June sixth, which is right two days later, put us to another week. And on a Monday. Um, some, we can, so option one is we can say, that's just the way it's gonna be. We're gonna stay with what we do. We follow a hundred and eighty days and that's what we do. Or are there a couple of different options? And I guess it's really looking at the calendar this year, but also maybe taking a longer view of what's our philosophy going to be in the future too. This is, as I tell, when we do calendars, it's never, in my eyes, it's never a one-year deal. Because once you make a decision, you make a decision, it's probably gonna roll out that way from there on. Because people always remember what, why you did something. So option two would be, we wanna stay true to what we do. Remember our last day of school at the elementary is three hours. It's eight thirty, eleven thirty, dismissed before lunch. Um, finals at the high school, junior high would be a half day as well. One option which delayed my original thinking was Jill has some professional development scheduled for some of our special education teachers. On our last month, or last Wednesday early out, which is May twenty-first. So that's a two hour early out. Jill would say that it's, if we wanted to, we could postpone that training till the following year. Or there might be some other opportunities for that training. We could make that a full day of school. So you pick up two hours from really that last day. And that Friday, which when we were supposed to get out June sixth, we could just make that a full day of school. After lunch, the elementary's could have their parties, you know, and the junior high could have a celebration in the afternoon. We end school on that Friday. Students do not come back then on that Monday. But staff would still come back from eight to noon that day. Cause that's still, they're still under contract. And when schools are canceling, teachers still have to come back because they're on contract. All we're doing is dropping the stu- student day that day. So that'd be one option is to say. Cancel our last early out on Wednesday, add two hours on, make it a full day, make the last day on Friday, still the Friday, full day of school. And that's the end. So we're not adding any more days onto our calendar. And really in that scenario, we're only losing one hour of school. Is really all we're doing. The only third option I would have is if we wanted to keep that early out. We just say, we keep the early out, we go a full day on Friday and we just excuse those three hours. Cause right now at the elementary, which is the school we have to go by for hours, cause it's the shortest day, they're at one thousand, one hundred and twelve. So we're over by thirty-two hours. So us forgiving three hours, we're still in a good place. It just kinda comes down to what's our philosophy and what we wanna do. Um, so I guess I'll stop there and then I'll take your looking ahead to the future too in terms of. Let me, I'll, let me foreshadow that first if it changes your initial thinking. For the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year, guess what day we're scheduled to be out of school on?
Monday.
A Monday. So if we make a change on this calendar, you can almost guarantee. We have to make a change in the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. So we'd have to come back and revisit what that looks like. Um.
Can I ask one question to make a little comment to that? Um, in this situation for this year.
Yeah.
I think a lot of parents, especially like for me with little, littler kids, you start looking for activities for your kids. Baby, lining up babysitters, whatever you have to do. Um, you didn't know we were gonna have to have school that Monday. Uh, next year's calendar will know we have school that Monday. It's kind of a pre-planned thing. So if we're paying for camps or sending our kids to camp or whatever, we would know that that day is a school day. Whereas this year, it was unplanned. So to me, there's like a little bit of a difference there.
Yeah.
I think either way, having to go on a Monday when you're, when you're gonna have to pay for childcare for that week likely anyways is frustrating. But at least we know about it for next year.
And that's, that's a great point to consider. I think the other thing I've, we're finding, at least what appears to be the case. This year and next year, remember, we're on the back end of a seven-year rotation. So right now, we're ending on June. Sixth, you know, ninth, whatever that day would be. Next year is June, June ninth or eighth.
Eighth, yeah.
So it appears a lot of camps and sporting events. Teachers' masters classes, things like that appear to be starting in the second week of June. Again, and I don't want outside things driving what we do as a board and decision, but it's a reality. And so I think what appears is if we start pushing into that second week of June, you start getting some of these other issues that come into play. Because after the twenty-five, twenty-sixth calendar, we then end on June fourth, June first, June fourth. You know, again, so we're back to the front end of June versus that second week of June.
Which is more normal, yeah.
Yes, and again, people ask, why are you going, what's so long? Well, we go a hundred and eighty days of school. You can subtract off basically two days or twelve hours for parent teacher conferences. That could be a hundred and seventy-eight days. Some school districts who are under the one thousand, or at the one thousand and eighty, they're just like, we got our hours in, we're good. So you start to see some schools not being so true to the one eighty anymore and bumping down to the one seventy-four or one seventy-five. Well, that's a week. So it makes a difference. Um. So I, it's just some big decisions that I feel like we gotta have as a board. Understand in the future, here's why we're doing what we're doing versus just saying, here's the decision and we're, we're moving on. I want people to understand the calendar is more complex.
Sure. Well, and with the first day of school not being able to be held until uh, August twenty-third. Next year.
Is the twenty-fifth.
Because the twenty-third is on a Saturday. But then we also get the full two weeks at Christmas.
Correct.
You know, a little different. You know, a little different. And uh, and who knows what snow days will be.
Correct.
Every year. So, um, what is our average on snow days?
Great question. Excellent question. I'm gonna maybe go back one question before that. Ironically, next year. Whatever drives the August twenty-third start day, which I could say maybe might be something happening in Des Moines. But with that, that end, the state fair ends one full week prior to school even the twenty-fifth. That's where with state legislation, if we could start the Wednesday after the state fair, we'd still be picking up three school days or potentially four next year. So I mean, those are the factors we can't control that pushes us later. Now, back to your question, we average two days a year over the last probably ten years. Some years we have zero, some years we have the polar vor- vortex, whatever it might be. So with this future, what's that?
Two days over the last sixteen years.
Sixteen years, thank you, thank you.
But actually a one point eight.
There you go.
A little less than two.
There was just like that one year where we had like that.
Yeah.
Few years ago.
So here's, so, okay, so looking ahead, what do you do? Basically, when you look at next school year, we'd end on a Monday. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, right now, we're slated for a Friday. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight would be a Thursday. And twenty-eight, twenty-nine would be a Monday. So. A thought for us to consider down the road is number one, can we get two snow days? My first thought would be number one, we got the February date. The second one is do we start using that last early out as a s- makeup day? That'd be two. So what we know is if that were to happen, then the last day of school becomes a full day. Versus a half day and we use that early out. Okay, that would do it. And then on the year when Easter lands in March. And we have that last Friday in, in April off. Because that's what it's, that's what our contract reads. On those years, which would be in twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, twenty-nine. You could potentially gain a third day if we needed it. My recommendation would be stay consistent. Use your February and use the last early out in May. Those are the two you always use. And on the year when you need, the thirtieth would be our, like the week before the thirtieth, we make that decision saying, yep, we're using the thirtieth. Because we need a snow day. So that'd be one option. The only other thing I would say, on the years when we end on a Monday. Do we consider doing a hundred and seventy-nine days in that year versus a hundred and eighty? That would be something to consider. So over a student's lifetime in Pleasant Valley. They may lose roughly five days or four days. Of school in their thirteen years of experience with us. You know, it's not gonna be like a tremendous amount where we're chopping off a ton of days. Now. One thing you have to think about, if you take five days less of learning times thirteen years, that is what, sixty-five days? So some kids around us get sixty-five days less of learning. We're not going a hundred and eighty days. To me, that's good for them, that's their choice. But that's, yes, that's a lot of student learning time. So that's why we've always believed one hundred and eighty is the right thing. It's the right thing for kids, building them for success, being with their teachers. But I understand it pushes into the second week of June, that's an issue. So when you look at calendars in the future, do we try to make that as a concession? And we don't end on a Monday if we don't have to. And if we end on a Friday, we're doing everything we can not to have to bump into the next week. As much as possible.
I think that's a good philosophy. Um, it's not that we're setting a precedent that we're never gonna end on a Monday. But you know, the precedent is that we will consider if we can make concessions. To not on a, on a Monday, we'll try, but it's not like a guarantee. All, all of how you just described that was sounded good to me.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. So.
Yeah, I.
Go ahead, Doug.
I would say, you know. We wanna drive excellence. And so I'm awfully cautious about comparing how many school days districts around us have. Because our goal is to be the best in the state. And as you said, when you start carving this stuff out, how much soak, soak time are the students losing? So I'm leery of, you know, going less than we do today. Preferably go longer, but it's not really an option. So, you know, this idea though of having a Monday, I agree. It's, it's a messy way to do it. If we had a year where we had a snow days and knocked us into two or three days in that week, then maybe we go into that week. But if we can avoid just having that Monday, that was the approach he talks about, Brian, that makes perfect sense.
You know, and, and what I want people to understand also is because people are like, well, kids aren't gonna come. Kids, no matter what day it is, the last day of school, elementary kids love their last day of school. They truly do. High school kids, for the most part, have to take finals. They're gonna be there at least part of the day. And junior high, I mean, if you're gonna see anyone who don't come, it's probably gonna be more junior high. So. Again, I think just if we can stay off that Monday and still keep true to what we believe. People need to understand we're doing the best we can in terms of educating kids.
So our requirement is ten eighty, right?
That's the minimum.
Okay.
One thousand eighty, yeah.
Okay. And so if. You, you, you had mentioned we ha- we can do one eighty days or we can look at it as ten eighty hours, but we don't have to choose one or the other.
You do.
You do.
Yeah, so we ch- our calendar says one thousand eighty hours.
Okay.
That's what we live by.
Okay.
It is.
Okay.
But there are times when the days, because in your, very great, there's a school district one hour away from us. Who has on their website right now, they have to actually add hours back in because they went under one thousand eighty because of a snow day. You know, or bec- so they're putting hours back in. So it's like, where's that fine line of, okay, we're gonna be at one thousand eighty-six. We're gonna be at what, I don't know. But we are, we are thirty, thirty-two hours over our minimum. Over the, that we have to have. Because our elementary school day is basically six hours. So I guess what I would like to know from you guys tonight so we can move forward, cause we gotta make plans for a lot of things. Is do you like the idea of saying? We use this Wednesday, the last Wednesday early out on the twenty-first. We pick up those two hours, it's a full day. And the last day is a full, that Friday is a full day. And that's what we do. Cause that's what we do in the future moving forward. So let's just put it in place this year. Or we say, option two is exempt that, keep the early out like you have it, just drop in three hours. And the last day on the Friday is still a full day. So it's either. We do a full day early out, full day last day, or early out, full day.
So I, right now Jill has something planned, right, for that last early out?
Mm-hmm.
So you, so that you can move that to next year.
Absolutely, yeah.
But in other years, are we, is that always gonna be flexible? Or are you gonna have certain things that you really wanna have?
Excellent question.
On the, on that day. Cause that's ultimately, ultimately, yes, we're talking about what the, the, the teacher instruction, I mean, the school instruction time for the kids. But there's also professional um, development that we're missing out on for our staff.
Great question. So the good thing is, you, we do the math and s- and different studio days that we do. At the elementary and junior high level. Next year, Jill is gonna start incorporating those with special education teachers as well. And so we would give, that's what, that training and that last early out in what, in May is for specialized teachers. Next year, that will be done during the day. Cause that early out really should be something that typically, we don't touch that time. That's teacher collaboration together on their own time together. So we don't typically plan something on those third early outs. So it can always be clean. They just lose their collaboration time on that early out. But again, they gotta come back. That last day of school for a half a day or last day of contract. So we will have to decide what that day looks like.
And the staff we have coming in to help with, it's our specialized learning classroom teachers continuing work on. How to dig deeper into aligning their instruction with alter- alternate assessment. And a book study we've been doing called Comprehensive Literacy for All, and then some work on structured teaching. I'm using a bunch of education jargon, sorry. But we've been doing it throughout the year on this third Wednesday. And then they get blue sheeted two hours anytime within that month to get the collaboration time. So we would just. Continue that learning into next year, which isn't gonna disrupt it that much. And we have two staff from the AEA that are helping. Kind of facilitate with being our sped instructional coaches. So we would just essentially move all that to the first time they meet in September. And I think they'll, they won't feel like they've lost anything. And it's not like we're giving up a, a really expensive speaker or anything like that. Like the AEA has been so flexible with saying, hey Jill, let's carry on the next session next fall. It's fine if we can't do the May one. So I think it'll be okay if they can't do the May one. If that helps at all.
And, and then, then I mean, I've certainly, I mean, if, if the solution is you're only losing one hour to prevent us from going into that following Monday. I think that probably a lot of families would like it. I think probably teachers would probably like it too. And so, um, I mean, I don't. As you mentioned, I mean, I think we're all very cognizant of, of the lost learning hours and I don't wanna make this a precedent for always doing this. But I think that when we come in towards the back end of the seven-year thing, and we're going to that second weekend. As all poses these challenges, we've gotta look at innovative ways to make it beneficial for everybody with the least amount of loss of learning.
And just a reminder, we are running two days longer than our neighboring district. So that already is a.
That's, yeah, good point.
We're still committed to excellence.
Yes.
And not that they aren't. We are really.
So that's my feeling on it.
Yes.
Alright.
So I guess the motion then would be however you can paraphrase that Molly to say. We would move forward with May twenty-first being a full day of school. And the last day of the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar being Friday, June sixth. As was originally scheduled or however we want to. Any ideas there, Debbie? Write it down, however you say it.
Um, I can botch through it.
I can probably too.
Okay.
I move the board approve adjusting the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar. Creating a full day on May twenty-first. And having the last day of school be Friday, June sixth.
Have it be a full day.
And have it be a full day of school.
Second. Second.
You're late, Doug. Too late.
Uh, motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Ayers. That the board adjusts the twenty-twenty-five, twenty, twenty-two, forty, twenty-five school calendar. Creating a full day, May twenty-first. And the last day of school being a full day on June sixth. Uh, roll call boat please.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Dr. Wogley.
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Ayers.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Strews, for all your work and looking into that. I know it's a. It's a lot of work for just the calendar, but, and I know it, it affects a lot of things. So I appreciate everyone being able to adjust and. Make it work at this on, on, um, March twenty-fourth, so.
And we will come back and revisit the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. Probably the next couple of board meetings then too, is what that can look like. We have IBPS on Wednesday night, this coming Wednesday. So I'll share this with them and then we'll start. Having a brief dialogue with them about twenty-five, twenty-sixes also. But that might be one of those where we come back and say. Do, because the way that twenty-five, twenty-six lays out, we may come back and say that's a year where we do a hundred and seventy-nine days versus a hundred and eighty. Um, we'll have to go back and just revisit what this looks like.
I remember thinking, you know, being on the board for so long, like, I don't remember, we didn't really, did, did, we never did this before, and I can remember. Adjusted the date. And then I remembered it was because we started, we made adjustments at the beginning of the year so that we would not go into that second week. And now because of the state legislature coming in and changing it, that's why we're wanting to do these problems.
We don't have that flexibility anymore.
We used to way back in the day have the problem where people were getting mad because we were starting school so early. Early in August, we used to have that problem. Yeah.
Yes.
Because we tried to get the ninety-day, it was always ninety days. Eighty-nine at the worst to get them in before winter break. Yeah, yeah. So. Hours in the back end trying to solve the world's problems, so.
Well, and every year we say that the legislator may, they may end up changing that. Um, I know it's discussed or asked every year, but so far we haven't had any success.
And there was a House study bill in the start of March this year to go back to a hundred and eighty days, but. Um, it was confirmed by legislators weekend that that was a dead bill and did not go anywhere. So I checked on that to make sure we weren't. Opening a can of worms. That'd be a hundred and eighty days in the future anyway, so.
Let me ask Mr. Simron.
Yep.
There you go.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to monthly financial reports, Mr. Tony Smith.
Alright, you have the February monthly financials in your board packet. Looking it over, um, this month, I didn't see anything that really stood out to me as concerning or, um. Unexpected things are pretty much tracking where we would expect them to be at this point in the fiscal year. So unless anybody has any questions, I'll take any questions, otherwise we just need a motion to approve them then.
Alright, I have a motion.
The board accept the monthly financial reports for February twenty twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Canwisher. That the board accept monthly financial reports for February twenty twenty-five as presented. Roll call boat please.
Mrs. Wheeler. Yes, Director Wogley. Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Yes. Alright. So our. Regular. We're going to closed session now. regular, we're going to closed session now.
Are we back on?
Back on.
Motion.
I do, please. Thank you.
The board appoint Lee McEwen as Pleasant Valley Community School District Director of Elementary Education starting July 1st, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Director Wogly. Director Wheeler, the board appoint Lee McEwen as the Pleasant Valley Community School District Director of Elementary Education starting July 1st, 2025. Call vote, please.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Dr. Wogly.
Yes.
Mr. Parnish here.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Backing.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
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 We're so happy for you.
I'm so, I just, I'm really honored and I, I take this extremely positively and also just very seriously. I want you all to know how honored I am. Truly.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Why don't we go ahead and do future dates and then we'll go back in the closed session for evaluation.
Okay.
So you can stay, are you still up on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, for now review of future dates, um, April 14th, 6 p.m. We'll have our special meeting, um, hearing one, proposed Pleasant Valley Property Tax Levy, fiscal year July 20 through the, uh, June 30th, 2026. And then directly following that, uh, special meeting, we will start our regular board meeting at 6:15. And then the next board meeting after that will be on April 28th and that will be starting early with the district band night. With that, we will go back into closed session.